Good morning. It's Tuesday, January 14th, and I am so excited to welcome you to the First Board of Commissioners meeting for 2025. I'd like to welcome Pastor Billy Moss to present our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful, cool morning to serve you, Lord, and doing just exactly what you have called us to do. And we thank you so much for the leadership in this community. And we just pray for them and your richest blessings on them and their families. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our leaders. We pray for grace for them. We pray for understanding. And Lord, we pray that you will give them wisdom at every turn, Lord, and each of us as members of this community, Lord. May we be salt and light, may we be your hands and your feet for good to the people that live here. And Lord, we commit this day to you, we commit ourselves to you, and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now we have the opportunity for a special recognition and presentation. This is for James LaCourcia Jr., who is the National Commander of the American Legion, and we have a proclamation. So would you like Mr. Dar and the recipient to come to the podium as we read the proclamation? Mr. Dar is welcome to come to the front. Mr. Courcia is at, will not be here till Friday. Okay. If you'd like to come forward, Art. So today, we're so glad to have you. Art, first of all, can you tell us a little bit about the American Legion that you represent?
The American Legion is a nonprofit veterans organization. A lot of people don't recognize us here in Rockdale County, but we have 507 paid members here that are, that are veterans here within the county. We do a lot of programs for veterans. We have folks that work in our posts, that are volunteers, that help people write their claims or get their claims put together. We have Saturday, third Saturdays, we have meetings, breakfasts where we recognize veterans and we assist them in needs that they might have. So any veterans in this room that need to come out and check us out, please come. We'll be doing it this Saturday, I believe it starts at nine o'clock. So come out. We do a lot of things with Christmas time. We collected a lot of items, supported the battered women's shelter, Rockdale County Emergency Relief. We gave toys to the New Hope Church on the south end of the county to pass out at Christmas time. So we just do a lot of things within the county and it's a, it's a volunteer organization. I think we have two paid employees in the place, and I'm not one of them.
Well, and also, so Friday is a big day for our local American Legion. So tell us a little bit about what's going to happen on Friday.
Friday, the National Commander will be starting his day out at Monroe, Georgia. They'll be, they have a couple of events up there. Then they'll be going to Loganville. And after they, after they have lunch in Loganville, we'll be taking the National Commander to the Walk of Heroes. And then after that, he'll be coming to the Conyers post for recognition there. This is a big deal. We don't get too many National Commanders coming into, into town to visit us. We've done very well. The 10th District for the American Legion has done very well. We're, we are a shining star in, in this state. So that's, that's what we'll be doing.
Well, thank you very much to you and all the dedicated people who are working to make that Legion so good. You forgot to tell about the big opportunity to connect with others on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Oh, yeah. That's usually my first line. We do have bingo on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Come out, it doesn't cost a lot to play, but we give away $1,500 on Wednesday night and we give away $1,500 on Saturday night. Our first five games are hundred dollar prizes and the cover all jackpot is a thousand dollars.
Well, thank you for all the good that you do in the community. I've played bingo there myself and had a great time. So I'd encourage other people looking for a little bit of fun to check it out on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So now I'll read the proclamation from the Board of Commissioners. Whereas the American Legion founded in 1919 has steadfastly served our nation by upholding the values of patriotism, advocacy for veterans, national security, and youth membership. The American Legion continues to be a pillar of community service and leadership. And whereas James A. LaCourcia Jr. was elected National Commander of the American Legion on August 29th, 2024 in New Orleans during the 105th National Convention. As an Air Force veteran, he deeply understands and demonstrates outstanding leadership and commitment to advancing the mission and vision of this esteemed organization. Representing over 1.6 million members across the United States, as National Commander LaCourcia is strongly committed to raising awareness for the American Legion's Be the One mission to prevent veteran suicide. And whereas Rockdale County recognizes and honors the sacrifices and dedication of our veterans and their families who have made invaluable contributions to Rockdale County. Whereas Rockdale County enthusiastically welcomes National Commander James A. LaCourcia Jr. and expresses our profound gratitude for his tireless dedication for advocating for the well-being of our veterans, service members, their families, and our communities. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 14th, 2025, as National Commander of the American Legion, James A. LaCourcia Jr. Appreciation Day. In witness whereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the official sale of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 14th day of January 2025. Signed, myself, Janice Van Ness, Post One Commissioner, Tawanya Smith, and Post Two Commissioner, Dorian Williams.
Thank you.
Item four is approval of the agenda, a motion.
Madam Chair, we are down to a public comment.
Sorry. We have a new change. So now we are going to have public comment today at the beginning of the meeting. And so you have probably noticed the yellow cards, the friendly yellow cards out front. We would love for you to take a minute to fill one out if you'd like to speak. On the back, you'll notice that we did provide information on how to contact all three of us. And we would like to focus as an administration, we would like to focus on collaboration and solutions. And we ask that comments remain respectful and professional. And for transparency, we cannot address issues related to public, the public hearing process, ongoing legal matters, or political campaigning during this forum. We look forward to hearing from you today. First, we have Toni Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Smith, I just want to get up and just congratulate you ladies on our first all-women, Chair Commissioner boy for Rockdale County. Just very proud of you ladies, and I'm looking forward to y'all doing a great job. And to my wonderful wife, love you, very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have Corliss Turner.
Good morning and happy new year, merry Christmas to everybody. I am so excited and I'm sure the citizens are excited for a brand-new Rockdale. We are looking forward to the, all the campaign statements and promises you made. And we know, and I do want to let everyone know, I'm saying it for myself, but I want everyone to understand that there is a lot of things in Rockdale that these two ladies inherited. I'm sorry, good morning, Commissioner Williams, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Smith. But there's a lot of things in Rockdale that, that, that has been inherited. And so I'm just asking that the citizens do be patient. There are some things that can immediately be done, but I do feel like we're going to be inclusive in what's going on in the county. I believe you ladies heard us, and we're looking for a bright new day. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your advocacy for Rockdale citizens. All right, we have Lee Wright.
Good morning, Madam Chair, woman, Commissioners, everyone else that's here. I'd like to welcome our new administration. I'm looking forward to some great changes. And like Ms. Corliss said, I would like the general public to not expect things to happen immediately. It's going to take time. We all know you inherited a mess, and it's going to take time to clean up a mess. So everybody just take time and breathe and give the, give the new administration time to work their way through things. Now, one thing I did notice, and this was from the past administration, on liquor stores. And on my street, Old Salem Road, I believe they're gonna, used to be Hank and Jerry's. And now, from what I have read, that little establishment is going to become a liquor store. I don't understand this because there's a daycare right across the street from it. So if it's a false rumor, please check it out. If it's a, if it's not a rumor, please check it out also because we've got enough liquor stores. We've got enough everything. We've got enough chicken restaurants. What don't we have enough of is good restaurants. So let's focus on something that we really need rather than things that we do not need. All right? Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. We have Ms. Betty Maddox, Battle.
First of all, I'd like to say good morning to everyone and peace and blessings in the new year. I stand before you as founder of a homicide support group grieving relatives in every violent event, which is a homicide support group for families who's lost loved ones to gun violence. But now I see that we're going to need this support group here in Rockdale County. I've stood before you on several occasions asking for your support. And we can do that three ways. We can do it with collaboration. We can do it with consistency, but most importantly, we must do it with compassion. There's a lot going on in the world today. What's happening on the West Coast could easily happen right here in Rockdale County. My grandmother used to be the midwife, Mrs. Corinne Maddox, here in the 30s and the 40s. And I moved to Rockdale County after I retired. So I am, I'm expecting a lot, you know, from you ladies. And I hope that we can do it, we can do it collectively and individually because what affects one directly actually affects all of us indirectly. So I stand before you as humble as I know how, asking for your support in the new year. It's easier to be prepared than to get prepared. Thank you so much for all that you, I expect of you all. Thank you, and God bless us all.
Thank you. We have Tyrone Morrell.
Good morning, Madam Lady. And congratulations.
Thank you.
I send you a congratulations on behalf of Brentwood Subdivision. And congratulate you again on your success and all you ladies on the success and your inheritance of the mess of Rockdale County. I would like to submit as part of your mess to clean up is to waive the salary increases that are proposed. The whole country's in a financial state right now, and I believe it'd be more than an imposed hardship on the county. When you look at the salary increases that are proposed, it would definitely devastate a lot of people. And that money could be spent wisely elsewhere. The other thing I would like to add to the mess list is the real estate development in the county. I believe we have enough townhouses, we have enough buildings going up, homes going up, that will surpass the capability of our school system and our health system in this county already, and our law enforcement system. We have a beautiful county, and I would like to see it born again by the efforts that you all submit. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I appreciate everybody's comments today and most importantly, your time and attendance to be here for such an important and significant first meeting. I'd like to start with the approval of the agenda as published.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, unfinished business. We have a volunteer appointment for the Conyers, Rockdale.
Madam Chair, I apologize to interrupt. Item number five would be approval of the minutes.
I apologize.
Sorry about that.
So item five, approval of the minutes from December 10th of 2024.
Madam Commissioner, if I may, I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Item number six, volunteer appointment for the Conyers, Rockdale Economic Development Council.
So I move to appoint Chair and CEO Van Ness to this appointment.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all abstaining from. All right, the motion carries. Item number seven, we don't have any items at this time for the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is our Council of Accountability Courts for Juvenile Court. And it's a mental health court initial grant award, and it's for $61,575 with a $10,866 match. Finance Director Azariah, can you speak to that?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
On the Council of Accountability Court Judges, the deobligation that is referenced in number one is due to a vacancy in that position, thus deobligating the funds.
Okay, very good. And item number two?
It's the same thing.
Okay.
Yes, so item number one, number two, and number three deal with deobligation of a grant, and that's due to, the majority of that is due to a vacancy in that position.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So we need to review each item and then vote concurrently? So let's start with item 2025-01.
On item number one, 2025-1, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 2025-02.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item 2025-03, Council of Accountability Court Judges.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have an emotion, a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
So Madam Chair and Commissioner, if it would please the, the board, I could read each item and then we could go up for vote or questions as we move through the.
That would be great.
Each item. So that brings us to item 2025-04, which is with Pinnacle Maintenance LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the landscape and grounds maintenance for Portman Drive at JP Car Complex, the Water Resources, Customer Service Center, and various other sites. This is change order number two to contract 2021-202 to add two additional sites for parking lot at H42 West Circle at additional cost of $400 per month. For lawn maintenance for the Restorative Justice Complex at additional cost of $1,300 per month to renew the term through December 13th, 2025, and this is a budgeted item.
So I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, so item 2025-05 are volunteer appointments for the Board of Adjustment. We had a few openings and we have three volunteers that are willing to serve those vacancies. The first one is with Dr. Weinstein filling the unexpired term of Bridget Howell. It's a term through February 1st, 2027. The second is with Leslie Lambert filling the unexpired term of Judith Barnes, and that term is through February 1st, 2026. And the third one is with Maury Wilson filling the unexpired term of Renisha Born, and that term is through February 1st, 2027.
And can you go over the responsibilities of the Board of Adjustments for the audience?
So the Board of Adjustment is a body that is set up of volunteer applicants that serve to take appeals from the Planning Commission, from the Planning Commission, and also from the Planning Department. That can't be done administratively, so they take, to hear those appeals.
And how often do they normally meet?
So they only meet on an as needed basis, so whenever there's an appeal, we usually don't get any more than maybe four or five in a year.
Okay. And we do have one other position open at this time, so anyone interested in that could reach out to Jennifer Rutledge for information and application if you have relative experience.
That would be great.
Thank you.
So these three appointments are before you this morning.
Madam Chair, I move to approve these appointments as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, the next item is 2025-06. It's with the United States Environmental Protection Agency through the Talent Management Department for an informal resolution agreement through the EPA complaint. It is due to the county being a recipient of federal financial assistance from the EPA. The county must ensure nondiscrimination in programs and activities pursuant to the provisions of Title VI and the EPA's implementing regulation. This is ongoing, is submitted for ratification this morning, and this is a budgeted item.
And this is a carryover item from the previous administration?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Very good. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
I do have a question. Is there a cost associated with that? Because, since it says it's a budgeted item.
So Executive Director Holmes will come to the podium.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. The cost right now, there are going to be costs as it pertains to research, there are going to be meetings that are going to be scheduled, so those items have been accounted for in terms of educational training that's going to be taken place. So this agreement does require us to, again, provide education, make sure that there is someone that is appointed as a nondiscrimination coordinator for citizens if they have concerns, that they'll be able to reach out and make those complaints directly to the county. So those things have been budgeted for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next item is 2025-07. This is with Weinstein Group Incorporated doing business as Brightwell Talent Solutions through the Talent Management Department. This is for on-demand executive search services. It's a 10% to 15% of the compensation and $2,500 per search. This is for 24 months, and this is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-08 is with Vortex Services LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Housing Authority sewer replacement. The amount is $484,957.50, and there is a bond with a 1.5% to be added, which is a total of $7,274.37. The term is for one year, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? I did want to note for the record that this is on their list of planned projects that they've been working on for quite a while.
I will place that in the record, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-09 is with Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, known as GFA, through the Water Resources Department for the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan. The loan is amount, amount is $155,000. This is a change order number one to contract 2024-58, it's to extend the term until December 2025. This is submitted for ratification, and it is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-10 is with the Georgia, Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, known as GMA, through the Technology Services Department. This is for the state and local cyber, cybersecurity grant program acceptance. The amount is $69,650 with a 10% match of $6,965. The term is October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. This is submitted for ratification and is a budgeted item.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025-11 is with the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, known as GMA, through the Technology Services Department. This is for the federal fiscal year 2025 state and local cyber, cybersecurity grant program application. The amount is $125,000 with 30% match of $37,500, and this is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the, the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments?
So it, the, the document says 2024, but you read 2025. Did I hear that wrong?
If I did, it was a mistake. It should be fiscal year 2024. I'll just do it again, make sure it's right.
Thank you.
Okay, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025-12 is with the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, known as GMA, through the Sheriff's Office. This is for the Georgia Gang Activity Prosecution Grant Acceptance. The amount is $38,870. The amount is thirty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars with a zero match. The term is September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash thirteen is a requisition through the General Services Department for Benchmark Management for the Judicial Administrative Complex Project Site Civil Utility Installation Inspections. The amount is ninety thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. This is through the JAC, PFA, bond funded, and it is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash fourteen is a requisition through the General Services Department in the Fleet Division. This is for Aitkins Ford Dodge. This is for five twenty twenty-five Dodge Durango AWD Pursuit SUVs. The amount is two hundred forty-three thousand forty-two dollars and eighty cents. This is SPLAS funded and is submitted for ratification. This is also a budgeted item.
Madam, Madam Clerk, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, can you clarify, um, the rationale for Aitkins Ford Dodge instead of a local provider?
Um, they were probably the lowest, most responsive bidder.
And also on a state contract.
I see Director Hammer getting up, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, congratulations. Thank you. Um, the, uh, the requisition for these five, um, uh, the Sheriff's Department was looking around for different ones. They found them available on the lot, um, as they were, um, since they have an emergency need. Uh, they made that request for that, so that's why I did that one.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
I move to ratify this requisition as presented.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash fifteen is a requisition through the General Services Department, Fleet Division, for HG-two emergency lighting. This is for one demo twenty twenty-three Dodge Durango and one demo twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor in the amount of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. This is SPLAS funded and is submitted for ratification. This is also a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to ratify this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash sixteen is a requisition through the General Services Department in the Fleet Division. This is for Williams Fire Apparatus to repair broken transfer case engine nine. The amount is twenty-one thousand two hundred two dollars and two cents, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash seventeen is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Delta Municipal. This is for meters and supplies. The amount is nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents, and this is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash eighteen is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Ferguson Water Works. This is for ductile iron and supplies. The amount is forty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash nineteen is a requisition through the Stormwater Management Department. This is for Benchmark Management to provide storm water with plan reviewing services for commercial and residential site development projects for twenty twenty-five. The amount is one hundred thousand dollars, and this is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash twenty is a requisition through Technology Services Department for Carisoft. This is for the Armist Enterprise Technical Support. The amount is eighty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars and one cent, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one is an expenditure request for Tyler Technologies Incorporated through the Clerk of Court's Office. This is for the Odyssey Annual Maintenance and Support. The amount is sixty-two thousand two dollars and forty cents. This is a five percent increase. The twenty twenty-four cost was fifty-nine thousand forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. This is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two is an expenditure request with Snyder Geospatial LLC through the Board of Assessor's Office. This is for the Qpublic.net website hosting. The amount is eighteen thousand five hundred four dollars. This is a five percent increase. The twenty twenty-four cost was seventeen thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three is surplus of equipment that has been submitted through the Superior Court's Office, Judge Mumford's Office, General Services Department, the Juvenile Court, and Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division.
Madam Chair, I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I did want to see if you could, Madam Clerk, if you'll comment about, how would the, the citizens find out about surplus items? Where are those listed?
They are located on our website. So, you would go to our website, and under the Finance Department tab, you could find the items that are listed for surplus.
Okay, very good. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Now, we have Board Comment, and I'd love to start with Post One, Commissioner Smith. Do you have any comments for today?
I sure do. Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before yielding the floor to me. Um, I first want to, um, thank the Directors, um, and Deputy Directors and assistants, and every, all the staff, um, here for the county. Um, thank you so much for making our transition manageable. It was great. Also, thanks to, um, our previous Chair for allowing that to happen through the staff. Um, he definitely created that environment of collaboration for us in allowing us to have what we need to come into the office. I also want to thank, um, my family for their support. And, most importantly, the citizens of Rockdale County. I thank you for entrusting me with this job to further your vision and actually be a voice. Today, you have a seat at the table. I'm just sitting here, but you are here as well. Um, that was my pledge to you when I was running, um, and I will definitely be faithful to that pledge. Um, I had a pledge of growth, action, and results. I will definitely pledge to have, make sure that Rockdale does grow, but it grows responsibly. And the action will be my work. Um, I, I'm not new to working and working for people, and in this capacity, you actually see me in action. Usually, I work behind the scenes, but now you'll see me in action. Speaking of action, um, my very first day, I got an email, a text message about a situation, um, that needed, somebody needed handled. Um, and before lunchtime, it was done. That's just, uh, example of some of the action that I would take. And that actually was support of Directors, making sure that happened, and I appreciate that. Um, I want to also thank Executive Director Rutledge and Chief Sanders, and also Patty, for what you have done for us during our transition. You've been phone calls away, texts away, um, come by, see you. You were open to any questions that we had, and I, I really appreciate that. That really meant a lot, um, to me. Um, I know that there are things that are, um, going on. There are people that are saying that, you know, how this board is going to be and how one person is going to not support or vote a certain way because of somebody else, but that's, that's not who I am. And I just want to let every citizen know that if you have any questions about how I feel or what I'm going to do, you, my door is always open. I did run on transparency, and I will let you know, and it's very, very important to me that the citizens know what's going on, um, with your money. You have elected a great steward over your money, and I would do just that. Make sure that I consider and not only just hear you, but listen to your concerns, your desires for what you want your community to look like. Um, I would definitely work with the Commission, the Chair, Chairwoman, and also, um, Commissioner Williams to make sure that Rockdale is a place that actually really rocks and that you are proud to live here. I ran to restore integrity to this position, and I will do that. You will hold me accountable, and I will definitely be someone that you will be proud of to have working for you on your behalf and representing Rockdale County. I would like to leave you with this. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. And also, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. I am looking forward to making sure that Rockdale County thrives starting in twenty twenty-five. Thank you again for your trust that you put into me.
Commissioner Williams?
So, welcome.
Thank you.
I, I have so appreciated the last few months when, before you took office, we could meet together and talk about issues and talk about concerns and ideas that we've had. Um, I feel like there's a good spirit of collaboration and that, um, we'll be able to do some really remarkable things moving forward. Um, people in the community are super excited to have three women on the board. Um, so, I, the comment to me just the other day was, women tend to look at things a little differently than men. I'm not sure quite exactly how, but, um, I'm looking forward to the work and working with both of you. I do want to comment on a, um, is our person from, yes, you are still here from the American Legion. I, um, as you were talking this morning, I wa- I thought about connecting with you, um, for a suicide awareness event in September. Um, we tried to do one before with veterans, and we had very little participation. That was a number of years ago. Uh, it's become a lot more prevalent that veterans are committing suicide at multiple times the rate of the normal, of the regular population. We've seen it in the news recently. Um, and so, I will get, have my assistant, Katrina Carter, speak with you after so that we can kind of talk about and see what your interest is in doing something.
Our program that Miss Van Ness read about, Speed One, is exactly what that is about. It's a reach-out program for veterans. Uh, we have a, uh, we have a old pretzel box or a jar, and we have all the veterans in our area, their names and numbers, pull that off of the list. And we call these folks up and contact them, uh, on an individual basis, ask them how they're doing, and then we invite them to the post if they're interested in membership, as well as, uh, trying to get them with their, uh, what their needs are.
Thank you. Um, one other event coming up that I wanted to share, and, um, is called the Walk With Me Virtual Dementia Simulation. This is an immersive experience designed to help individuals better understand the challenges faced by people living with dementia. This type of simulation allows users to experience through virtual reality or computer-generated environments what it feels like to navigate the world while living with cognitive impairments such as memory loss, confusion, and disorientation. It's, uh, it's occurring, um, at, on January thirtieth, at ten-thirty in the morning, at the Retreat at Conyers, which is located at fifteen oh four Renaissance Drive. This is, um, this is a growing, and in fact, the news last night, the National News had a report on the fact that dementia is, the numbers of people suffering with dementia is growing. They weren't sure if that was, it was actually growing or just that it was being reported more often now. Um, but I thought the numbers were staggering when they talked about it. Um, I know that my mother suffered from dementia. And by the way, there are several forms of dementia, quite a few forms of dementia. Alzheimer's is the primary one at about eighty-five percent, but it is not the only one. And so, um, this looks like an event as we, I am working with the Senior Center to develop dementia awareness and programs for those living with dementia and those ca- their caregivers. This is a really good opportunity to find out, well, what is it like to live with dementia, especially if you, I, I, I suspect there's no one in here that doesn't know someone or have someone who has experienced dementia. Um, so, this would be, you know, a good, um, a good basis. As, as I talked with a, a friend, I'm on the Viewpoint Health Board, and, um, one of the other board members who has been a long-term member also was telling me yesterday at our meeting that her husband has dementia, which I already knew. But, simple little things like you need to go get a shower. Well, why? Are we going somewhere? And then the explanation that, well, no, we're not going somewhere, but we do take a shower every day. Um, simple little things. Um, we have done our, last year, we did some, uh, dementia-friendly certifications, which our Senior Center did, and I did, and I think a couple of our, uh, Director Rutledge and Chief Sanders did. So, there, we will be focusing on this during twenty twenty-five and creating some opportunities for, um, speakers and, and people living with dementia who, that, where they can get together. Um, those are my comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I, I'm looking forward to that event. I think I'll put it on my calendar for sure. Thank you. Um, and I would like to take this opportunity to introduce two people that we have had the pleasure of knowing in Rockdale County. If I could have Willie Powell and Shaniqua Moore come to the podium. Um, these, uh, both of them are graduate students at Harvard's Kennedy School of Government, and they have, um, through a grant, through a grant application process, uh, that I applied for, um, we were able to have them come here to our community and follow some of the process of the transition, and they are going to be doing a final report. But, could the two of you just say a couple of brief statements about the opportunities that you've seen here and who you've maybe got to meet and those kind of things? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman, Janice. It's been such a pleasure. Uh, good morning to everyone. Great to see you, Commissioner Twana, Commissioner Doreen. Uh, to all of you that we've met, it's been a pleasure being here at Rockdale. I'm Shaniqua Moore, uh, one of the students at Harvard Kennedy School. We are currently doing our Masters in Public Administration. I am now a Georgia Peach. Was born and raised in New York, but I, uh, recently moved to Cobb County four years ago. So, I'm just a few counties away from you all. I hope this is not the end, uh, that we continue working together hopefully in the future. We've had the privilege of meeting with several department heads who have given us, uh, great information about the opportunities at Rockdale. Uh, see Parks and Recreation here, Finance here, uh, Talent Management. and, uh, Sue and Jennifer, who's been excellent helping us, uh, during his time. Our, our goal here was really to support, uh, Chairwoman Janice and to ensure that she had what she needed um, as far as priorities and vision. Um, and we've been able to, uh, meet with a number of people, as well as hopefully present a final report that could be helpful and useful to you all in moving Rockdale forward. Thank you so much, and it's great to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I would just like to add my thanks to everyone who's been so generous with their time. As a New Englander, I have not spent a ton of time in Georgia in the past, but it's been great to be able to spend some time with all of you and get to see this, uh, wonderful county and all of the exciting progress, uh, that the new board, uh, wishes to pursue.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate your feedback and what we're going to be able to learn from the two of you and the time that you've spent here in Rockdale. Um, so they will be, they've been here from January second through this Friday. So we are very grateful for the program that Harvard has. And, um, the introduction to this program came from a luncheon that I had with Commissioner Tisa Washington, who attended Harvard and went through a similar, uh, program study. And, uh, we are just so grateful to have you and what you add to our transition as we move forward in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to, um, make a couple of mentions about just the overwhelming support that I feel in this community from our citizens and their level of interest in being engaged and seeing a better day for Rockdale. And so I will say I feel, uh, confident about this board moving forward, working together as a team. I think we were afforded a very good opportunity by being able to all come together before, in twenty twenty-four, um, thanks to Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Nesbit, um, in allowing us to have access earlier than we even expected. And so I think that really fares well for the community, and, uh, he and myself have worked, you know, not only in the past for the citizens of Rockdale when I served on the board before, but moving forward, you know, he is just a text away. And so I appreciate that, um, kindness and offer for the betterment of the citizens. Um, I do want to give a shout out to the directors who have been great. I know it's a lot when a transition comes like this, but you guys have stepped up to the plate and been forthright with information and support, and for that, I am very, very grateful. Um, I would like to also remind everyone that, uh, MLK Day, Dr. Martin Luther King, will be honored on Monday, and the NAACP is having a breakfast at the Rockdale Career Academy. If you'd like more information, see me after the meeting, I'd be glad to get you that. Um, and I will be attending as well. I also want to acknowledge, uh, President Jimmy Carter and just, uh, let you know that he has many great accolades, but here are some that I admire the most about him. Jimmy Carter is widely recognized as one of the most dedicated humanitarians of our time. His commitment to peace, human rights, and alleviating suffering across the globe has been unwavering. Through his work with the Carter Center, he made significant strides in eradicating diseases, promoting democracy, and mediating conflicts. His hands-on approach, even after leaving the presidency, exemplifies a lifetime devoted to service and compassion. His legacy as a humanitarian leader is truly remarkable, reflecting his deep care for humanity and the endear, enduring impact on the world. I will say that I had the opportunity on a number of occasions, um, uh, because I attended Oxford College of Emory University. There is a close relationship of course with Emory. And so we got to personally hear from him at the Carter Center on a number of occasions, and I really am even more grateful, uh, that I was able to do that. But in our, you know, transition team moving forward, we definitely want to make sure that we elevate our citizens and have great compassion and respect for the viewpoints and being open-minded. And as a team, we want to make sure that we go to different parts of the county and hear from various citizens and really reach out to the people. We understand this meeting's at ten AM when most are working, um, and may not have the luxury of being able to come to this meeting. And so it is streamed on Facebook, and we want to continue to make sure we have outreach opportunities for citizens. And so I just appreciate, um, the legacy that President Carter has left. And if you wonder what, why the flags are half-mast, they, under Governor Kemp's order, they will be flying half-mast until January twenty-eighth, so. Uh, I also wanted to, let's see, I think that's all my notes for the day. But again, thank you so much for coming out today. Um, Clerk Rutledge, do we have a need for executive session today?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the need to discuss personnel and pending and threatened litigation. So we would need a, a vote to enter into executive session for those reasons.
Okay, thank you.
I, I move to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and personnel issues.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. The motion carries. Thank you so much, have a blessed week, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.